Welcome to Housing for Huntsvilleans, the podcast, a podcast about one couple's quest to eliminate homelessness in Huntsville by August 2026.
Okay, welcome back to the Housing for Huntsvilleans podcast. Today, we are joined by our second candidate for public office. Today, we're joined by Guy Sodomo-
Sodomayor. Just like the Supreme Court justice.
I knew it, but I can't say her name either. So I'm sorry to both of you. Thanks for coming on.
No problem. Thank you for having me.
So you are running for Madison County Commission Chairperson. Is that right?
Chairman, correct.
Chairman, okay.
The, the office name is Chairman, but yeah, and it's not just open to men.
Okay, well, first order of business will be to change that, I guess. I don't know. It's Alabama, who knows? But um, can, can you tell, I'm new back to the area. I'm not used to the man positions.
Yeah.
Anyway, can you tell me, I'm not, I didn't pay any attention when I was in DC or San Francisco to county government. And so for me and for the listeners, like, what does the Madison County Commission do? What is the chair, I'm just gonna call it person, do? Can you just go over the basics?
Sure. So you've got your city leadership, your mayor, your city council, that sort of thing, that they're responsible for what happens in town. So the police, generally speaking, the schools in those areas. But the county is responsible for everything in the county that the cities are not directly responsible for. So a lot of the transportation, the infrastructure, the roads that the cities themselves aren't responsible for. The sheriff's department falls under the county. The waste disposal falls under the county as well. So the county commission is generally responsible for maintaining the roads, collecting the taxes, divvying out the funds to all of the various entities within the county that the cities are not specifically responsible for.
And are there schools that are county schools but not part of any city?
I don't believe so. I think all of the schools fall under the city, but their funding comes from the county and the state and the federal government as well.
Okay, alright. Um, and so you've got roads. Is there transportation to live in roads that the county has to deal with?
Not at the moment. That's one of the things that I would like to change. I would like to see more transportation, but I'm sure we'll get to that.
Yeah, for sure. Um, so in a nutshell, like, why should people care about? So, and, and the commission kind of acts like the city council.
Correct. The city can, basically the city council for the county.
Okay.
Right. They, um, the, all of the cities within Madison County have their own city councils as well.
And does the county have a lot of sway over anything that the cities would, would care about?
Not authoritatively. However, there's a lot of negotiation that goes back and forth between the cities, the county, the state, the federal government, and it's important to be able to talk with and through all of those different levels of government to make a, a community that works well.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, yeah, so talk to us about what the chairperson does when it comes to the commission.
Sure. So each of the districts within Madison County has a commission chairperson, or sorry, a commissioner.
So this is like a council person?
Correct. So they're all voting members. They come to the council with measures that they want to implement. And each of the county, or each of the county commissioners will vote on this measure. Generally speaking, the chairperson is not a voting member, except in a tie, and then the chairperson has the tie-breaking vote.
And what are some thing, I, I, two questions. One are, like, what are some examples of things that they voted on last year or last term? Just so we can get a better idea of like what they do. And then also, why go for chairperson rather than start as a commissioner?
Both fantastic questions. So last, last term, they voted on expanding the infrastructure. So there's a big, I want to say $10 million road improvement measure that they passed, and they're gonna start working on over the next 10 years.
And so that's more roads or maintaining current roads?
A little bit of both. So maintaining current roads, expanding some roads. I don't have the figures right in front of me to know exactly which ones, but there's some major thoroughfares that they're working on. So as to your second question, why I'm running for chairperson and not simply the chair, or the council member for my district, it's because there was really nobody on the Democratic ticket running for either of those. And so I figured, well, if, if nobody's gonna run, I might as well pick the bigger one. I made it very clear, if there was gonna be somebody who was gonna be better than me who would run, I wouldn't run against them. They would have free rein to run, and I would run for my district, but that did not happen to be the case. So I went ahead and ran for, or I'm going ahead and running for chairperson.
And when is the election?
It's gonna be in the general election on November 5th.
Okay. And is this a partisan race?
It is. So the Democratic Party has put me forward as the Democratic candidate, and the Republican Party is putting Mac McCutcheon up, who is the incumbent right now.
Okay. And what are your five biggest beefs with Mac McCutcheon?
I'll be honest, I don't really have any beefs with Mac McCutcheon. I know that he's very popular in the area, so I really don't have anything bad to say about him. But he has been in the political game for a very long time. He said previously that he was going to retire from politics, and then he was appointed to this position, and now he's running again. So I think that it might be time for him to hang up his hat, but we'll see what the voters decide.
Okay. So that seems like kind of a weak reason to run, that you think it might, like, what are you gonna, what do you plan to do that he wouldn't do? That's worth running against him?
Well, I can say that one of, really the primary reason I'm running is because I don't want to see a single party ticket. But also Huntsville itself and Madison County in general have been growing immensely over the last 10 years. And the county has not kept up. So the leadership that is in place now is not meeting the needs for Madison County in general.
In what ways?
The roads, really the roads. That's kind of the commission's primary job. They're not sufficient. There's, I mean, we saw over the, the snowpocalypse that we just had, the roads were undrivable for days at a time. And even if there, there's not snow, it's kind of a mess, kind of getting anywhere. I live in Harvest, and for me to get downtown, it's a 30-minute-plus ordeal. Madison County is not gonna stop growing. And if we are trying to build the infrastructure for Madison County of 10 years ago, 10 years from now, it's gonna be completely unlikable.
So what can you realistically do about that, though? Because if we just build more roads, evidence indicates that that doesn't really ameliorate traffic. And every new road that you build has to be maintained. So that's a huge liability for the area going forward. There's all sorts of environmental issues, eminent domain issues to just building more roads, widening roads. So like, is that the solution, or is there a better way?
So I don't think that's the solution. And you've kind of hit the core of my plan, or my vision, really. I want to see much more public transit. My big vision is some sort of light rail in town. I've seen it work very, very well in other cities. I've traveled internationally a lot, and I've seen it work very, very well overseas. So a light rail solution and the buses, sidewalks, you know, the capability of getting around other than having to get in the car, I think would solve a lot of problems.
Now, you are not gonna find bigger fans of alternative to driving than us. I couldn't agree more. But I do have questions from a practical perspective. I guess my biggest question is, and this is a lot of why we focus so hard on housing, Housing for Huntsvilleans, is you need a density of about 12 to 15 units per acre to make transit, mass transit feasible, according to at least one study I've seen, but certainly makes intuitive sense that transit works better with more density. So is there anything that the commission could do, or you could do as chairperson, to facilitate the kind of density that would be useful to make transit feasible?
Absolutely. Another thing that the council does is they vote on and approve the construction of new housing developments. So a lot of mixed-use housing that is kind of going up here in mid-city that we're seeing, that could be more, more utilized. Having only single-family homes everywhere is not going to be sufficient for the growth that we're expecting to see over the next 10 years.
Yeah, absolutely. I think mixed use is, is really, really important. I think less so in a place like downtown Huntsville, because downtown Huntsville is kind of inherently mixed-use. I think you, you mostly just need to focus on increasing density. But when it comes to the county, I think that's where mixed use gets really, really important. Because first of all, a mixed-use development enables walkability. It makes it possible for people to get where they need to go, to grocery stores, to jobs, to doctors, without having to get into a car. But in addition, the more mixed-use developments we have throughout the county, the less everyone's driving in the same direction to get to the same thing at the same time. Does that make sense?
Right. And yeah, the, bringing up walkability, it's very important to me. My neighborhood, I can walk within my neighborhood. I cannot walk outside of it, right? So if I want to go to the grocery store less than a mile down the road, there is no path for me to get there without getting in my car. And it's, it's really heartbreaking for me, because I like to walk a lot. I've, again, having been overseas a bunch, being able to just walk to the grocery store and walk back home with a, you know, your bags full of groceries is very pleasant and very fun, and it is literally impossible to do here.
And I think that when I was moving from Birmingham, Alabama to Washington DC, I was like, how am I gonna get groceries without a car? It just, it was wild to me. I couldn't imagine. And then I started doing it, and it was like, this is awesome. I love this. And I think it's really hard for people to, until you've experienced it, like, understand the difference between driving to get your groceries and walking to get your groceries. Like, do you have to go more often? Yeah, there's only so much you can carry on your back. But that's okay. You get a walk out of it. And you get to be face-to-face with other humans. You get the chance for chance encounters in a way that you don't when you're by yourself in your car. It's obviously way better for your mood and your health to be walking versus driving. Driving is dangerous. Like, there's, it's better for the environment. Like, there's so many reasons why walkability is important in ways that I think are just hard to conceptualize if you've never been in an area where that was easy and safe and pleasant to do.
Right. And yeah, I absolutely agree. I would, I would love to see, I, I would love to see safer roads, and the easiest way to get safer roads is to have fewer cars on them.
Thank you. I am so tired of the Vision Zero stuff where we're not talking about reducing net driving. There, there should be no discussion about making traffic fatalities less frequent without talking about reducing net driving.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's my primary goal. My primary vision is to improve the, the road infrastructure, the transportation infrastructure, the walkability infrastructure of Madison County.
Well, I love it. Um, I don't think I can vote for you, but if I could, if I can, I will.
Well, if you live in Madison County.
So all Madison County can vote for the chairperson?
Correct.
Okay, well, then you've got my vote. Perfect. I'm glad we addressed that. I guess I'm curious as well, like, so you can vote. Why would the commission vote on zoning and building ordinance-compliant developments? So like, I'm a housing developer. I want to build a mixed-use development in Madison County. So I don't, and I submit my permit to build, and it meets all the requirements.
That's kind of awarding contracts to developers. It's making sure that the development of the county is going up in a safe, sane, and, and legal way. There's lawyers that will present to the commission, hey, this, this building code meets all of the requirements of the county. Now you get to vote on it. Why it requires the council to vote, I, I expect so that everything's not just happening haphazardly, and there's more of a plan.
That seems bad.
How so?
Well, you, you don't want to put impediments to building, right? All else equal. So if, on what basis would the commission deny a builder, again, who's meeting all the requirements? Like, it should be a one or zero. You should have buy right permitting, in my opinion.
There's a lot of land that belongs to the county, a lot of land that the county has to acquire to, to give to the builder. So the builder can't, generally speaking, just buy up land. So the county has to approve, yes, this land can be used for it, or if it needs to be rezoned, the county will go ahead and do that.
Okay. Yeah, that seems suboptimal as well.
But you also have to remember that not all of the roads in the county are suitable for new housing developments. So in addition to this new housing development being built, now the infrastructure has to be.
So the county has to build the roads?
Correct. And has to put in the, the water, the sewer, the electricity.
Interesting. So the tax, so the developer says, we want to buy this land from the county, right?
Right.
Generally speaking, and build a housing development on it. And then the county says, okay, yes, and then we will, the taxpayers will fund the water, sewer, and roads, and the, all, all the infrastructure, essentially, besides the actual building, to make it happen. Is that right? Yeah. That's interesting. And the city, people who live in the city pay taxes to the county. So in a way, people who live in the city are subsidizing sprawl in the county.
Not necessarily, and also not automatically. That's, that's also one of the things that the county commission is aware of, right? Somebody in District 6 who's paying their, their taxes to the county is approving a housing development, say, in District 4.
But some, the person who lives in District 6?
So the, the county commissioner for District 6 will vote on, hey, we're gonna build a development in District 4.
Okay.
Right? So they, they get a vote on that because their constituents are paying the taxes that are going to help support that. So that's not an automatic thing. If District 4, for example, is getting all of this development and is siphoning away all of the funds from all of the other districts, the other districts are gonna be a little less amenable to it. So, all right, District 4 is gonna get some love, District 1 is gonna get some love. Everybody's gonna get some of this benefit of the, the taxes within the county.
That sounds like the most sprawling thing to have happen, right? Because let's say one district gets all of the, you know, the love, the infrastructure.
Right.
That's all equal denser than if you spread the new developments over all the districts, right?
But then the districts, so say, for example, if District 4 is getting all of the funds, right? All of their roads are gonna be upgraded, updated, maintained. None of the other districts are gonna have their roads updated, upgraded, maintained, because they're not getting any developments either. Right? So there needs to be some sort of equity, equality, as it were, among, all right, where are new people going to move? Where new place is going to be built? So yeah, it, it is more of a sprawl, right? The, the outskirts of Huntsville are kind of developing faster than the interior of Huntsville. But it does not necessarily need to be that way. Right now, everybody is more in love with single-family homes. People are less interest, excuse me, interested in apartment buildings, units. You know, we're seeing some apartment buildings going up, but they're more luxury apartments, and that's not really in the realm of feasibility for a lot of people. So that may be something that I can, I can put forward. Hey, can we put some more lower-income housing? Of course, there's the nimbyism. People don't want low-income, excuse me, let me get a drink. People don't want a lot of low-income housing in their areas, and it's kind of not fair, right? People need a place to live, and if you're expecting somebody who's working at the grocery store to live in the outskirts of town, that's not fair.
Yeah, I agree. But what can the county commission do realistically to help ensure that housing is affordable and that we're building the kinds of housing that people can afford?
Kind of working with multiple levels of government. So there's a huge problem in this area with illegal Airbnbs, where housing units that somebody could otherwise live in are now being reserved for people coming in out of town, staying for a few days and then leaving, or perhaps staying longer term, but as a unregulated rental, let's say. Furthermore, there's a lot of big investment groups that are buying up.
Let me, let me stop you there. I, I hear this a lot about Airbnbs, and it's really frustrating to me because it, it's like, and I'm not accusing you of this, but it's just like, you're almost there, right? The whole theory behind Airbnb is driving affordability crisis, the, driving the affordability crisis, is that it reduces the supply of homes, right? Because let's say you have 100 homes, and 50 of them are only available for short-term rentals, then that's 50 fewer available for long-term rentals, and the cost of long-term rentals goes up. So we understand that supply and demand drive the cost of housing. But if you take all of the Airbnbs, you're just shifting, you're just making the cost of short-term rentals higher. And there aren't enough Airbnbs to significantly impact the price of long-term rentals. So at the end of the day, rather than ban Airbnbs, it seems like a much better solution is to build more units of housing, total units.
That's, that's actually a very valid point. And I'm not, not to say that the problem is Airbnb's, but one of the problems, you know. There are a lot of factors that go into housing crises and housing problems. The, the non-existence of housing certainly is one.
Is the main.
Right.
There aren't enough units.
Right. And so if, if we can have more units, in, in whatever capacity we can create them, approving more, approving denser, approving mixed-use, those will go a very, very long way in, in helping alleviate and hopefully solving the housing problems.
Yeah, one thing that I think is really interesting is things like tiny homes and small lot sizes are illegal in Huntsville. And so that's part of the problem that we don't, the, the, the two problems are, one, we don't have enough total units. So all else equal, the higher the demand relative to the supply, the higher the prices, and that's exactly what we see in housing, shocker Rooney. But then the other problem, that's a downstream effect of that reality, is that the units that are being built are, are the expensive ones. Because developers are always gonna build the most profitable things before they build the less profitable things.
Right.
In a, in a area where they're constrained in what they can build, they're gonna build the most expensive things. And then the third thing is, developers are actually banned from building the least expensive things by our zoning ordinance in Huntsville. So again, we don't allow things like single-room occupancy buildings, so that's things like, it's essentially kind of like a long-term hotel where people would share bathrooms and kitchens, and/or kitchens. And these were like very common at the turn of the century, but they've been banned, again, because of nimbyism and small lot sizes and tiny homes. In the county, my understanding is the tiny homes are legal to build in the county. Do you know?
I do understand that they are. I'll have to check, but I have seen some tiny homes. I've, I've only actually become aware of them very recently, but I've seen some tiny home developments in the area that are, that are popping up. And I would be very interested to learn more about them.
I would be very interested in learning more about them and having you learn more about them as someone who may have the power to make more of them happen. You know, I don't think that there's one solution to the housing crisis, but I think there's no solution to the housing crisis that involves banning forms of housing that are cheaper to build.
Right. Yeah, it, there's, there definitely does need to be more of a holistic solution and a variety of new homes, not simply one single kind, certainly is the case.
I know that I'm looking at like Houston's rezoning. Arlington just had an interesting rezoning, Arlington, Virginia, though their court, it's now tied up in legal stuff. But have you looked at other counties and seen what they've done to deal with their, you know, housing and infrastructure in ways that were useful or, or even ways that you'd want to avoid?
I'll be honest, I am very new to the political realm, right? So a lot of these things I'm kind of figuring out as I go. So I am very interested in learning more, but I don't have any specific examples that I could cite on, this is the way to do it, and this is the way not to do it. I think Huntsville kind of can and should grow organically and naturally. Where are the places where people want to live? Where are the places that are available? Instead of coming in with a bulldozer and saying, this is how we're gonna do it, and we're not gonna do it any other way.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think one of the things that is really interesting about growth is that a lot of people are anti-growth, because they associate growth with negative consequences. But you can grow in a way, first of all, a city or a county or a municipality is either growing or dying. There's no such thing as stasis. I'm sorry. Like, I know you think whenever you showed up, or when you were born, was the zenith of that place's existence, and you want to preserve it because that's what you know, and that's what you're comfortable with, but like, that's not reality. You can't just preserve things in amber. It's growth or dying. Growth is better. So there are ways to grow that are good, right? And one of the ways to grow is up.
Right.
Because there are only two ways to do it, up or out. There's, there's not a third thing. And so out, we've done, and it's yucky. It's traffic. It's long commutes. It's public health problems. It's terrible for the environment. It's a lot of traffic fatalities. Up, while it doesn't look green, like sprawling lawns and farmland, like in-between houses looks green, it's actually terrible for the environment. It's not ecologically sustainable. What's sustainable are high-rises, right? It's density. It's instead of everyone having their own little lawn, having a shared park that everyone can walk to and like be together. And so I think growth gets a bad rap because we've done it in a very stupid way in the past. And Huntsville, I think, the, the, the US started urbanizing in a big way, you know, 10, 20 years ago, probably 30 years ago. And we've seen how other cities have urbanized and have dealt with that growth. And Huntsville has the opportunity, 30 years in, you know, really still starting to grow. I mean, we started to grow 10 years ago, but we, we were continuing to grow, and we're starting to reach capacity in a lot of ways in terms of doing things the way that they've been done. We have the opportunity to learn from what these other cities have done poorly and do it better ourselves. And so that's one thing that makes me really excited about organizing in Huntsville, is the inflection point that we're at and the lessons that we can have learned if we will choose to look at them and implement the learnings. if we will choose to look at them and implement the learnings.
Right. And to your point, Huntsville has grown so much that it is the largest city in Alabama.
Yes.
This largest single city. Certainly the Huntsville metro is not larger than other cities metros, but we have grown, right? We are still growing and you're right, if we don't support that growth, then Huntsville will become a dying city and I certainly don't want to see that. Huntsville is cool. It's got amazing charm. I want to see it succeed and you're absolutely right. We do have a, an ability to take all the lessons learned and implement those things and make them uniquely Huntsvillian to make our growth better and we're not going to stop.
Love it. Anything other people should know about your candidacy, the office, your vision, the perils of a one-party state?
That's kind of my point is the perils of the one-party state. If, if nobody's being challenged, right, they can't grow. So the, really the Republican Party in Alabama is not challenged. We need more people running as Democrats. So if you're interested in politics, I really would beg of you to go to your local, whatever your party affiliation is, go to your, your local party meetings and find out what they're about. See who's around. If you're interested in running, go ahead and run. If you're not interested in running, see who is and help them run.
I love it. Yeah. And if you're interested in politics in the Huntsville area, go to, I was going to say Housing for Civilians, go to HuntsvilleNewLiberals.com. We have monthly happy hours. We'll get you plugged in. You know, it's funny, I grew up conservative. I grew up in Harvest and Sparkman High School, class of 2004. And I remember back in the day, conservative meant pro-capitalism, pro-free markets, pro-competition. You know, we understood that when you had monopoly or when you had the government dictating winners and losers, there was no incentive to innovate. There was no incentive to take risks and to get better. Why would the parties be any different? If I don't have any competition as a Republican Party in Alabama, where's the incentive to get better? Where's the incentive to take risks? Where's the incentive to innovate? Where's the incentive to deliver?
Right. Yeah. If, if you're the only name on the ticket, you don't really need to do anything. You know, you're getting in.
And there are always going to be people who are going to benefit from your decisions and it might not be the voters.
Right.
So, well, I appreciate your time so much. Thanks for running. It's, it's a really thankless thing to run for office. I understand why people don't want to do it. And so people who do it, especially, you know, just because I think it's the right thing to do, I really respect and admire.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, I've, it's exciting. It's stressful. It's terrifying. But I love it. It's, it's been a wholly unique experience and I can say that I recommend it. It's a lot of fun.
Well, I'm going to ask you again after the election and we'll see if you've changed your mind, but we'll find out. So cool. Do you have a website or how can people get in touch with you?
So you can find me on Facebook. It's guy.sotomayor.3. I have an ActBlue account. Again, you just search for Guy Sotomayor. I'm sure we can leave links in the, in the description. And yeah, look me up if you agree with what I'm saying, certainly support. If you don't agree with what I'm saying, please let me know why and I'd love to engage.
And will you be at the next happy hour?
I will. When will that be?
It's the second Thursday of every month.
Okay. Yep. I will make an effort to be there.
Fantastic. So come to the happy hour, ask I questions, find out what it takes to run for office. And yeah, have a great rest of your day.
All right. You too. Thank you very much.
Thank you for tuning in to Housing for Civilians. This podcast is a project of Huntsville New Liberals. Sign up for our newsletter and RSVP to our monthly happy hour at HuntsvilleNewLiberals.com.